Go up a little bit, too bad.
May I?
I can't see you go.
Okay, when you set off, I'll raise it.
The mics need to go up.
There's no community input, nobody signed up. So we will move into our agenda with literacy development. I'll turn it over to Dr. Williams.
You have many different mics.
Good afternoon, and so particularly enthusiastic about the opportunity for the board to receive information today pertaining to literacy development. And the reason I'm so enthusiastic is that all too often across the nation, there has been an underemphasis on applying the science of teaching reading in our classrooms, specifically phonological awareness and phonics. And so I'm very pleased that in Texas generally, but also Clear Creek Independent School Districts specifically, and in many places across the nation, there's an increasing emphasis on returning to a focus on phonological awareness and phonics as part of applying the science of teaching reading. And so tonight, you'll have, or this afternoon, you have the opportunity to hear, learn more about our work with literacy development. And we have some special guests with us, but I'll turn it over to Ms. Hughes to get us started.
Good afternoon, everybody. We're so happy to be here and to share and to lift up a little bit of our work in Clear Creek ISD, especially this initiative. We talked about it over the summer, and we developed some of our action planning and some of our strategic planning beginning this school year. But we're so happy to bring, our first idea was to bring to you students and a teacher and everyone else. We decided at this time of day, it might be best to bring representatives from the campus to, so you can hear a little bit more about what's happening at the campus level, as well as the district level. So we have amazing folks here with us today, and I want to share with you, first of all, we have our instructional, one of our literacy coaches here, Maggie Kalania. She is one of our just amazing coaches that's doing a lot of heavy lifting out there, as well as we'll get to see Ms. Salvo in action here in just a minute. Our awesome first grade teacher from Wedgewood Elementary. This whole team is from Wedgewood. It's good to be at Timberwood today. We're excited to showcase all the great things happening over there, as they are across the district. And also led by Ms. Buffy Johnson, our campus principal, who is amazing, and supported by our assistant principal Audrey Borack, who also has served on our literacy sprint team when we did our responsive strategic planning, formerly a literacy coach, too, and might have been in my third grade classroom, I thought. So I'm glad. So I'm glad to share with you that. I know, I know, amazing students. Let's talk a little more about the amazing things happening in Clear Creek ISD, and if we can get that going right. We're really thankful to talk a little bit about literacy development. This is not just about the reading academies that we talked about this summer. This truly is about raising the bar for literacy across the entire school district. And it is a pre-K-12 initiative. We're going to talk about a portion of that today. It comes from our strategic plan, in which we talk about nine learning experiences that will inspire student achievement, agency, and growth. And our priority is literacy development, and then also the work that's happening based on House School Three and the initiative across Texas to ensure that strong foundational cohesive and calibrated instruction is taking place, not only in our school district, but across the state of Texas. So with that said, I just want to launch into the fun part. It's all fun, but let's talk a little bit about what it looks like when you see reading academies and the work of our focus on phonics and strong literacy instruction, a component of the day. You'll see two portions, two classrooms, that are going to be highlighted. Ms. Salvo is brave enough to let us come in her classroom. We want to show you a little bit of that today. So if you don't mind, you definitely want to see what's on the screen, so you might have to turn around a little bit to catch that.
All right, the first one we're going to do, I'm going to say two words. You're going to give me a thumbs up if they rhyme, and a thumbs down if they don't. Are you ready? That flash. Okay, now, the next one. I'm going to say three words. I want you to tell me the beginning sound that you hear, okay? Are you ready? Okay. Whimper, whiz, weather.
Whim.
Whim. Okay, we're just listening for the beginning sound, okay? I'm going to do that one again. Whimper, whiz, weather.
Whim.
Good. Okay, the next one, I'm going to segment some sounds. You are going to put them back together. Are you ready?
Yes.
M, ah.
Mine.
Good. Okay, the next one, we're going to isolate the ending sound. I only want to hear the ending sound after I say the word, okay? Are you ready? Fourth. Okay, the ending sound is th, good. Okay, the next one, I'm going to say the word. You have to break it up into sounds. Okay, you ready?
Yes.
Chain.
Ch.
Chain.
Good. When we, what happens to the vowel when we add the e to the end of a word? What happens? Gauge. What does it make the vowel do?
It tells its name.
It makes the vowel say its name. So for example, I started off with the word map. I added that sneaky e, and it changed the word mad to what? May. Because remember, when a vowel changes and it says its name? So for map to may. I want you to write it on your table with expo marker. It's a word that has a vowel in the middle and has a sneaky e, okay? I want you to write the word home on your table. I want you to write the word home. The sneaky e makes the long o say its name when there's an o in the middle. We know that it says the long i sound when the i is in the middle of the word. Yep, it says I, and that we know that if there's an a in the middle, that the a says the same too. It says what?
Hey.
You're going to get your books out. You are going to look closely with your detective eyes, and you're going to see if you can find any words, table one, to add to your ea side, or ee. Beautiful, honeybee. So can we add that right here? All right, look at the cover. Do you need any of the long e?
I need e.
Oh, where did that? Chain. Can we write down chain? Is chain going to go on ea or ee? All right, ee, go ahead and add it on that side. We're going to clip that sound. Sh. Perfect. Next one. Whale.
Whale.
Very good, but I want to see your choppers moving. Next one. Ace.
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 Very good.
Well, that's a good way to start reading, right? I am hats off to our team here for letting us come in and share and make it look so easy and fun. The true premise behind this is truly the science of teaching reading. And although it looks fun and engaging for students, there is so much precise articulation and study and careful deliberation that goes into each move that's made in the classroom. And that's an important factor to share. Want to start with putting Ms. Salvo in the star of our video, for the kids of the star, and I thank you for supporting them too, but want to share a little bit about what you have experienced with reading academy, reading instruction, and we saw a little phonics, a little integrity in there as well. Would you share a little bit about what you've learned and what you've noticed in your instruction?
Of course. My name's Kianne Salvoa. I'm a first grade teacher at Wedgwood Elementary. This is my third year teaching. Since being in the classroom, I have seen so much growth in my students, not only in the area of phonological development, but oral language development. My students are able to really take the skills that are presented, integrity in phonics, and they're able to transfer them as readers and writers. It has been so eye opening to me, also as an educator, to understand the purpose behind reading academy and the guidance that it's given me in order to implement my whole group instruction, my small group instruction, and then my differentiation in the classroom. I'm really able to see what skills should be presented first at the beginning of first grade, and as they can progress to see where they need to be in order to master all of their phonological development and their oral language. And it's really eye opening to me as an educator to see that these artefacts in first grade that cover the oral language and the phonological development, they stop in first grade. And so for me, it just made my teaching so much more purposeful in my delivery and to really get these students to master these skills before they get successful in second grade, and really to be able to identify the areas that they might struggle with, but also to highlight their strengths in the classroom. So it's just been all around very enlightening for me, and I've really enjoyed doing it with my cohort. It's been very beneficial.
Thank you, Ms. Salvo. Thank you for sharing. Thank you, not even coming to share that with us. Thank you for sharing. Also, I want to get the perspective of this work with, at the campus, and schoolwide, and Ms. Johnson and Ms. Borack. Thoughts and feedback on what you're noticing across Wedgewood Elementary?
So I would say one thing we're excited about is that all the teachers, it's kind of leveled the playing field, and it's helped with the common language of, you know, the simple book of reading, and it's also helped our teachers have better data conversations on really pinpointing, is it phonological awareness? Is it sound letter recognition? Is it sight word recognition? Are we having a breakdown with comprehension? It's really helping the teachers be laser focused and able to hone in on where the struggle is, instead of just struggling with reading. And it's all of our teachers getting this great professional learning opportunity versus a few years ago, we had a few teachers be able to attend struggling readers' professional learning, and that one teacher would come back with knowledge that may or may not have, you know, gone beyond their classroom, whereas now, we're seeing high engagement, we're seeing kids really being aware of how, you know, letters make sounds, and they're really being more aware of what the sounds are.
Well, I'll just add right into that. So I'm a member of our RTI team on campus, and that does happen a lot, where when you're a first grade teacher, you're also a kindergarten teacher and a second grade teacher. So seeing the teachers all be now equipped with ways they can scaffold, more targeted to support some interventions, so they know exactly how to help them move along with the skills that they need. I even, you know, Ms. Salvo shared that with us, like, oh, now I know what has to come before that, and so they're able to target that. And then as, you know, we try to calibrate often as evaluators as well, so it's helped, it's helped us learn through the same steps that they've learned in the reading academies, what to specifically be looking for in classrooms when we're in during literacy instruction. So I think that's helped us to provide like more purposeful feedback and help them set more purposeful goals as teachers.
And a lot of the heavy lifting is done this year in our Clear Creek ISD by our instructional coaches and our reading literacy coaches. Maggie, do you want to share a little bit about what you, your role in this work and the role on campus?
Absolutely. So as literacy coaches in Clear Creek, we are cohort leaders, which means we are involved with facilitating the learning on our campus with our cohorts. So like at Wedgewood, my cohort is kindergarten, we have kindergarten teachers, first grade teachers, and then any additional staff members that work with K-1s, kiddos. So it's been really nice having a room full of educators that come from kind of different perspectives. It's really nice to have, we've got our dyslexia teachers involved, we've got our resource teachers involved, our AL coaches involved. So it's really nice to have perspective from our entire cohort and to learn from one another. So my role is to kind of facilitate those modules from the state and deliver those modules to our teachers, but in a way that it's nice coming from a literacy coach perspective because we're familiar with the content and the curriculum, and we can make those connections, we can help the teachers make connections from the state, the content that we're getting to what they're actually doing in their classrooms. So that's been really nice to help facilitate those conversations, instead of just delivering the information, we can make those connections across what happens in their day to day life with the kiddos. But another great part about being a cohort leader here in Clear Creek is that we have a model where we can work with the teachers in between the modules. So it's not just those days outside of the classroom when we're working together, we can carry that learning on like in the planning that we do. So anytime we're looking into a new unit, we can really try to build in, well, how can we increase oral language, or how can we make connections from our reading academy learning and plan for that in the classroom, so that our kids are really benefiting from it, and it's not just learning that we're doing and moving on. We can really kind of cultivate that transfer.
Truly, our coaches have been incredible about learning along the way, being our lead learners, and along with our administrators and teachers and carrying this learning. So I thank you for that. Just to share an overview of the work, this slide just shares a little bit of this year, all administrators, all K-1 teachers are involved in this work and learning together. Any teacher who is supporting K-1 is in that. Going into next year, our second and third grade teachers will join in, and you see how we will carry on from there. And from there, our reading academies do not stop at this point. They will continue for any new folks who come in, so this learning will continue to move on. In 2023, we will see what will take place by then and legislative changes, you just never know, but new hires will receive this as well as there's possibilities for fourth, fifth, and possibly pre-K in the future, but that's 2023, we're going to focus on this year right in front of us right now. But just to talk about this year specifically, I'm so proud and just honored and humbled by the work, the hard work of our administrative teachers in this significant year. Each of the administrators are going through 42 hours of professional learning on top of all of the other learning that we've helped them and provide with them and carry out as a team. We're 20 hours in next tomorrow. Tomorrow, we'll continue on with another phase of that for our administrators. And our teachers have 60 hours that are required, and 24 hours are completed. So all of our teachers and administrators have submitted artifacts and completion, and our coaches are busy supporting that work, and that's just so nice to know that we're at this point of time. By December, we'll be midpoint through the progression of all the material. So it's nice that this is the point where we're seeing all the modules come together and really see that laying out in new ways in the classroom across classrooms across the district. So just an overview of the work, I know we've talked about, you saw some snippets of the phonics and the programs that were designed to bring our reading academies to life, and so I wanted Dr. Salvo to share a little bit about that.
So just a little connection to some of the things that you saw in the video, and also some things that Maggie mentioned. So TEA is providing our content for the reading academy. So that content is coming from TEA, but we have worked to purchase some resources and make some curriculum changes to help support the integration. So you saw in the video, the unit says study phonics curriculum, which we actually purchased in 2019. There was legislation about purchasing a phonics curriculum, and so we purchased that for K-2 at that time. And that resource helps teachers with teaching spelling and reading phonics, as well as decoding and encoding of words. And so we've also purchased some of the consumables that go with it, so the students can take home flashcards with words and the letter charts and things like that. Another resource that you often hear us refer to is the Peggardee resource, that's actually the phonemic awareness resource. So we have two versions of that, a kinder version and a first grade version of that, and that's really what we're basing our phonemic awareness curriculum on. It helps build phonics and decoding and explicitly teaching of the sounds. This is a new resource that we bought this year, or in the spring and summer, to support this transition this school year. So another, a couple of other changes regarding the curriculum. So as we began to review the reading academy's content and more about the science of teaching reading, we saw that there were some differences in our curriculum that we needed to adjust, and we will continue to do that as we always adjust throughout the summer and prep for the following year. But we created this year a Unit Zero, which is actually sort of the foundational skills in each of the grade levels to help with learning environment, creating all of those situations where we want our students to be in, to be ready to learn. And we increased the time of our phonics block to make sure that we had enough time to teach that decoding of words. We renamed the phonics block as well to phonics and foundational skills. It was previously called phonics and shared reading. So that really comes in on, we are teaching them foundational skills for reading. We also revised the first grade learning progressions for reading, so that they were aligned with the science of teaching reading. Buffy and Audrey both mentioned calibrating their walkthrough tools and walking around to support. We've worked on a walkthrough tool for the administrators to give feedback to the teachers and continue those conversations outside of, in small group or in conversations when they're talking about the work that's done in their classroom. I wanted to, I know Maggie said how much the literacy coaches have done to support this effort, but I want to say again, very much they have done to support the effort. They're not only facilitating all of the reading academies on campus with the teachers, but they're also providing that coaching after the reading academy in the classrooms. They work in the LMS. TEA is using Not its Learn to put a different LMS canvas, so they've done, they do their work in there, as well as the gravy artifacts and just a lot of work. So we appreciate all the literacy coach support. So finally, I just wanted to thank all of you for coming, as well as our district literacy leaders out here. Kristen Russell, who's our coordinator of literacy initiatives, and Karen Hearn, who is our elementary ELA coordinator, Billy Eastman, secondary ELA, and then Liliana Martinez is our SLA, and also world languages, to thank you for being here as well.
We're so thankful it's taken a team to launch and to make this lift off from the compliance task of what we were presented, to make it a meaningful change for every student in Clear Creek ISD. That's what we're committed to, that is the work, and I'm super thankful that we've had to see it come to life in their classrooms, Salvo, and I'll hopefully share that with you today. But as far as questions or comments, Dr. Williams, I don't know if you have anything else to share.
No, I would love for them to have opportunity to ask questions, time permitting. I'll just highlight, reinforce some things that you already mentioned, and that is great appreciation for coaches, school level administrators, district level folks, and teachers, because it could be just, as Ms. Hughes said, a compliance activity, the state's requiring 60 hours for teachers, which is huge, but we want to have a meaningful impact on kids. And for that reason though, folks are like, how are we going to make this as valuable as possible? Okay, what changes might we make to this, to how we're going to implement what's been handed to us and say, you must do this? What changes need to be made? Because it would have been easier just to proceed with the way it was handed to us from the state, but there's been a lot of work to try to make it as directly applicable for teachers, particularly because they've already got five million things to do in their lives as teachers, and then to spend this huge commitment of 60 hours, let's make it as meaningful as possible. So I'm excited about that.
And I just wanted to say, and it just shows, you know, teachers, literacy coaches, takes a village, and especially coming off of the pandemic and trying to assess where our students are, and, you know, I think it was very prophetic when you said you have to, if you're a first grade teacher, you're a little bit of a second grade teacher and a kindergarten teacher, because you have to find out, some students are maybe a little bit behind grade level, some students are going to be ahead of grade level, and you're trying to get all of them to move in the same direction. I guess, Maggie, the only question I had, how do you get parents like to reinforce some of the activities and some of the things that are going on in the classroom at home?
That's a great question. I know our teachers, like when they're, they'll send home, take home readers to our students, and so many times they'll not just send the books home with them, but they'll send kind of a support resource, whether it's these types of questions you might want to ask the students. I know we have, we have, this has not been used necessarily in this manner, but I'm thinking of even like some of the videos we've made in the past that we've made for educational purposes for teaching when we're in the pandemic, but the idea of being able to use some of those for parents to see, like, this is how it works. When you're trying to, when a kid comes across a word in a book and they don't know what to do, sometimes the parents might throw out a strategy that they're familiar with, but it might not be what they're learning in the classroom. So open communication from our teachers about, you know, here are some suggested ways, like sending home their strategy charts that they might use to solve words or some ideas.
I'm glad you mentioned that too, because that is a large portion of lifting up the reading academies to the literacy development, our strategic plan that this team is deep in the work of, and that is building out the supports to truly take this and build in those supports to our parents, so that they can just increase that at home. And so that is a piece that we are working on now, and it's just what you said, it's a roadmap with lifting those videos and bringing that to home to help parents help us in this journey of reading.
And I loved to see the whole class engaged. That was, you know, especially at that level, that's what makes it, so. I'll open it up to anybody else. Any comment, questions?
I'd just like to say, congratulations on a Herculean effort, and everybody that came together to make it happen. This has had to be a very large challenge, and I think we all recognized that it was. So I really appreciate everybody working together to do this for our kids. We know, we know the walls that they run into, and the parents and everybody else as well, and I really appreciate the effort to try to get past where we are.
Thank you.
So I'd like to focus on one tiny little detail, but this is just the way I learn sometimes, like, I go down on something and help you see the big picture, and that's, in that video, I noticed the one child was working on his Ws, he kept making this gesture, and I want to ask, you guys, you guys literally do have to associate semantic gestures with phonics. Is that part of this initiative? Ah, okay.
The beginning sound is always here, and then it moves down.
And that's one that I didn't even talk about. Highlighted that, and you keyed into that honestly, because that is a new piece and new learning for all of us this, in this year, in this program, in coming to life. And it really is connecting with kids and helping them engage in that learning in new ways, and so that's been a new added aspect of this year and the work. Ms. Salvo, are you seeing that?
Oh, yes. They love the hand signals, and teachers love it. Minimal crap, you don't need anything. Just your hand. Be like her in that, that's great.
And chompers, I'm going to, I gotta use chompers. At some point this week.
I just have one general comment, and that is, I can think of at least one official who I think we're doing that. Is this video?
Well, not like even talking, they were.
We'd love to. We have a longer version than this, but a shorter version, maybe this year. Ms. Salvo, she loves to spend time in your classroom.
So, yeah, actually, my question was the same thing that Jay had asked, which was make sure communicating that out to the parents and the community. You know, I made some notes on what it was about the revisions within learning progressions. Anytime you revise, anytime you do something new and different, it's kind of something that not everybody takes easily, you know, whenever there's change, but you all seem to be doing it very well and communicating that out to the parents and letting them know this is what we're doing, and any support you can offer us, we appreciate it, because once the kids go home, they're in another world, you know? So thank you all for all you're doing and your team. Great job.
I think, Dr. Williams, you kind of hit on a little bit the question I had, which was, this is, I mean, obviously, we're seeing the results, and this is an awesome effort, and I think this mandate came down from the legislature, and we definitely made the most of it, and it turned it into a huge positive, and so I really appreciate everyone's hard work that went into that. But it is another 60 hours of work in a calendar year for every teacher, and so how are we managing the additional time burden on our faculty that this is creating?
And I'll ask, whether it be Dr. Salvo or Ms. Hughes, or whoever, to address both in terms of teachers, but also coaches, against how it impacted, heavy impact in coaches.
It's definitely the definition of the job this year, and you can speak to this, that it has definitely reprioritized the work and that this has really been a massive focus, a change focus to the grade level specifically, and the work specifically on this content, whereas coaching for pre-K five... this content, whereas coaching for pre-K 5, it's a role, it's definitely a mirror of the focus for this year.
Absolutely, but I will say, yes, so like my, the majority of my time does focus on kindergarten and first grade now, but outside of those days, it really has been, you know, we're finding the balance of supporting other teachers along the way, in different ways, it does look a little different, but it's worth the time, I feel, because instead of just taking, like we talked about, taking the information and just sharing it with our teachers the way that it's been given, like we really are trying to build in opportunities to make it valuable and interactive and spend time having conversations, so I feel like the time has been, it's been an adjustment, but I think it's going to pay off in the long run, for sure, for the kids.
And I'll say, too, just to add to that, from the teacher perspective, we really tried to take things off the teacher's plate that were not related to reading academies this year, so in a typical year, I don't know if that's such a thing, there's such a thing anymore, but in a typical year, we might go to a curriculum study about reading or writing, and one about math, and one about science, and we are not having professional learning for K-1 this year in anything but reading academies, so our focus is on reading and writing this year for them, and we'll swing around to the other subjects next year when they finish.
Thank you.
Yes, I need to have some loops closed up, just because of things hanging, and that's when, when all of this first started about the reading academies, my understanding was that CCISD got approved to deliver it ourselves and not have to go, so I guess that's what I want to make clear, what we're doing is different than what is happening in most other places across the state.
So, so, yeah, so back, so before this year, when they first, when TEA first put out information about reading academies, there were sort of two ways teachers could access it. They have to access it through an authorized provider, so a lot of districts in our region are going to Region 4, the teachers are going to Region 4, they're doing a blended online version of it through Region 4. CCISD applied to become an authorized provider, so that we could help us align it to our work that we've been doing and use our literacy coaches. If you're at Region 4 and you're doing it blended, their version of blended, then there isn't access to a coach to support actual implementation in the classroom. So that was the main reason why we wanted to become an authorized provider, because then we could control it a little more and make it work more for CCISD. So it is the content of reading academies through TEA, the content is exactly the same, and all of our literacy coaches went through the process through TEA to become a cohort leader, and the test, for lack of a better word, but a screening and a test to become, to have the ability to lead a group, so.
Just mindful of time, too, I know, is that we also were doing that during the school day, so we are providing that support, which is unique to other districts around the state in which they're doing that after hours, because that would be thanks to you and your commitment, we are providing some support, and that's been a challenge certainly this year, but definitely something that we want to invest in, that this money is moving forward. And then additionally, we have other tracks that are also, Ms. Ross is kind to support and lead all of our administrators through the administrative blended cohort, we also have a bilingual cohort as well that's going through, and so all of this is quite an orchestration that's moving forward and supporting our learners, so good point on.
I really want to make note of that, I mean, I think that's so important, because I have to believe that there is a huge difference between going off to Region 4 and getting some training for some number of hours, and having a cohort go through it in the classroom, doing things right there with students, and that is ultimately benefiting our students way more than anything else, and I'll put that together with everything I've seen, you know, on social media from other teachers who are just going through it and frustrated about having to go through the hours and get the hours, so I want to really make note of that and pull all of it together, and so the support for the time and everything that's going on and doing it in-house, I think is just tremendous and needs to really be recognized.
We're representing a pretty great team at Woodwood Elementary, these Timberwolves here, and I tell you, that's happening across the other 26 as well, so we're very thankful.
And then my only other thing was picking up on also the note about the changes and the progressions, and in my mind, well, the momity came out, and the PDA parenting came out, like doing a reading night program or, you know, something like that, and just figuring out, clearly there are links to the standard-based grading, and so to, I mean, I realize there's a lot going on right now, but to the extent that as we go through the year and get further into it, we can figure out what those links are, and actually also tie it into training parents, because we were on this big effort to train parents before COVID happened, and then that made that a whole lot harder during COVID, but I think this is a great opportunity to come back into that effort and really tie in the parents.
It is definitely in full motion.
Yes, yes, so we share that commitment with you as well, it's important, our parents are our best partners, so we definitely want to inform and equip them with the same skills and information.
Thank you.
I'll just say thank you, watching the video and thinking about how many times my daughter has come home and tried to explain to me what she's learned at school, and I've not learned it that way, I think a how-to video would be invaluable for our parents and also for our kids, it's something they're really proud of, so thank you all for really handling it the way you have, and with the level of just the focus and excitement that ultimately, you can't, you know, infuse any other way than through you all, and I think it really reflects the passion that you all have for what you do, so thank you for that.
Fortunate for our communication department, Kirk Swan team that helped us through that to life, so yay, we're thankful for that.
Thanks, guys.
All right.
Well, thank you all, fantastic.
Thank you, thank you all for that.
Thank you.
One question, so being an authorized provider, the district, so it's been an authorized provider, how are your comments, do we have, it seems unique, right, for the district to be an authorized provider versus Region 4 training? How unique is that in the state, like which number of districts do they miss?
I'm not aware about statewide, but I know from going to a recent chief academic officers meeting, there are a handful of districts that are providing in-house training, most are going to Region 4 or some other provider, and it's very dry. Have you seen any of the TEA materials? It doesn't change, it's very dry, and so I wonder how much their teachers are really getting out of it, and that's why I'm so grateful for our staff in the district that have taken such a dry training and dry materials and have adapted it to benefit our students.
I think it kind of goes along in the lines of the district of innovation, you know, and look with control, I'm not surprised about that, so, you know, it's great stuff.
Fantastic, and we will move on to item B, COVID-19 protocols and practices, including exclusion practices.
And as with the first item, there's not action required at a future board meeting pertaining to this, really, we just want to update you all on several aspects of COVID related to consistency of protocols for COVID-19, and like with the literacy development, both of the, these are each key priorities that were identified as part of superintendent targets. So to provide context for the main presenters, I'm going to make some introductory remarks, is just want to show some data that reflects what you all already know, and that's the big peak in reported cases in early September and being in a much better place, so you see this graph showing reported cases specifically in Harris County, so this is drawn from an update with health experts and medical experts, this was shared with Region 4 superintendents in a conference call last Friday by the CEO, Memorial Herman, and there were other medical experts on it, but on the call as well, but just wanted to share that, and the next slide shows the most recent, this is from this morning, CCISD specific cases, so the first slide was related to community cases, and we've seen that really what happens inside our schools is reflecting what's happening in the broader community, so if you were to compare that this page from our website to early September, we were at 670 active cases in early September, and so, and that compares to last year, our peak in January was 142, so as we've discussed, September peak was much higher than our peaks last year, but we're in a much better place. Now, that's not to say that people aren't still getting sick, that there aren't hospitalizations, there aren't deaths, but we're in a much better position. The other thing interesting about this data is you see that there's not a concentration of cases of those 33 cases, they're really spread out at a number of schools, most schools don't have any cases, but those schools that do have cases, there's the 33 that were current as of this morning are spread out across the, and so you'll hear more later in this presentation regarding us, our transition from Level 4, where we've been to Level 5.
Wait, we've been at Level 3, right?
Excuse me, Level 3 to 4, not 4 to 5. Eventually, I will look forward to, once you say that, then I'm really happy, transition from Level 3 to Level 4, we're currently in 3, but I'm getting ahead of the presentation, but I figured I would cut to the chase on that as well, as we transition, because there's several parts that you'll hear some updates on, and one thing we want to share with you is just consistency of activities, we've wanted, and in terms of student, opportunities for students and then also access for parents, we've wanted to have consistency across schools, and that's a hard thing to achieve, but we feel like we're doing some good work in that area, and want to share with you, even though it's a challenge, that challenge, consistency is challenging, one that requires constant tending to, but we're pleased with the work that's been done.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, good evening. I just want to take us back to late July and early August, things were grand and glorious as we're getting back, and I saw many of you at the administrative mini camp, and we are truly a big, big ship, and when that ship turns, and when the data turns like that, it takes a lot to get everyone in the same direction, and so we did, and I'm thankful for our principals and all of our leaders who worked through shifts and adjustments and constant communication of weekly different changes coming from not just within our local area, but around the state and country. And so I want to focus in on updates since October 12th, and recognizing that we've been in this fortunate area where we have continued to see the rates decline, Dr. Williams showed we're at 33 active cases, 28 students, our elementary students have just been able to get a vaccine if they so choose, just last week, and that's about a five-week process, though, from the time that they get the first vaccine until they're fully vaccinated. All that considered is that all of our schools in the district have hosted in-person events and parent events, so even though typically we define open houses, you know, usually before school starts or shortly into the school year, our houses are definitely open, and there have been many opportunities for parents to come into our schools and engage with our staff and administrators. Our parents have access to school buildings, with the exception of joining students for breakfast or lunch, or other food-based gatherings indoors during school hours. We've had many outdoor activities with food, and we've seen the carnivals that we've been fortunate have been able to take place. Our schools are hosting concerts, the board events, athletic events, based on previous planning, when I say that, that, I'll give you an example, like when we had the college night, it was online, and that's because it was so much planning that goes into events, that planning has to continue almost in many cases, and it's easier to pull back from online than it is to switch to a brick and mortar, just like that. And by the way, we've had, you saw on a Friday update, we've had high participation rates in almost all of our events, so we're thankful that our parents and community members are re-engaging in our schools, I think we are all hungry for that, and we know they are as well. Our indoor school day gatherings have been limited to singular double grade level events, with opportunities for more people to engage online. Our parents have access to other in-person events, such as book fairs, fun runs, parent nights, et cetera, you can see up there, including watch dogs, robbies, and copymobs, the list goes on. We are so glad that, though, with where we are after our events, have returned to pre-COVID-19 conditions and traditional scheduling, that we're fully open. I want to commend Brian Pelosi, he has taken on this role to conduct observations with a team of four others to do campus visit mitigations. So coming out of September, we worked to try to improve our consistency across campuses, and Mr. Pelosi assembled a team on, before then, and their first meeting was on October 11th, to develop plans to conduct an ongoing audit or evaluations, observations, I shouldn't say evaluations, but observations of campuses, so they've developed a cycle of observations that began on October 24th, and those have been great, what Mr. Pelosi and his team have done are visit campuses, and they've used an observation form, but really more to help them get eyes and ears on looking at information from campus leadership meetings, visiting classrooms, visiting cafeterias, and ensuring that there's better consistency with lunchroom protocol, signage, hand signizations, classroom spaces, et cetera, seating charts, and it has provided an opportunity for informative discussions of how to improve. Now, knowing that we've hovered between the Stage 3 and Stage 4 because the rates are lower, it's really been an opportunity for Brian and his team to calibrate on the observations and have meaningful dialogue with campus leaders, so that if and when, and hopefully we don't, but if and when we end up in another peak, we're ready, we're ready with this observation instrument, with Brian's team being able to visit campuses, support administrators, and for the campuses to have the protocols in place and know what expectations are to help mitigate COVID-19. And this follows, this is followed by an exclusions audit report, and we're sorry for Julie Smith.
If I can, yeah, I'm sorry, I wanted to just hop in and make a few introductory remarks on in terms of exclusions audits, so exclusions is just a reference to exclusion of students or staff as relating to our protocols, and we provided, after there were changes from the state level, we provided some clarification internally, and we worked to clarify, we worked to further clarify what our procedures were, because we want to neither underexclude or overexclude, so by underexclude, I mean exclude students who by, or staff members who by state requirements need to be excluded to protect health, but on the flip side, we also do not want to overexclude, and because if it's not appropriate for that exclusion to occur, obviously, there's loss of learning, and we need folks being able to work when it's safe to do so, and so we've chosen, as you all know, then to do audit of practices to learn from that and improve practices, and so I'm thrilled with the results you're here in terms of, generally speaking, there's consistency as you're here, but I'm also pleased that we've identified some opportunities to increase that consistency even more. I'll also note that while Julie Smith, a familiar face, is giving the overview, it's my pleasure to introduce Jerry Lopez, who is our new internal auditor, and is literally just started. It's a first day, and so she will be here listening to, and she and Julie will co-pilot on the next phase of the next round of audit, and then she will fly solo later, not that she couldn't do it, but for consistency purposes, Julie Smith will participate initially with her, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, good to see you all. So as Dr. Williams suggested, as you know, in the audit plan, there's always room for ad hoc audits, and so in September, Dr. Williams asked. asked that I would perform a review of our exclusion practices. So we wanted to make sure that our practices consistently aligned with district protocol, so making sure that students, if they met the criteria, students or staff were out for the 10 days, and the documents that we distribute to our stakeholders that were consistently applied. So the audit process involved a random interview with 10 nurses. I randomly selected 10 campuses. I either went to them or had teams meetings and just asked a series of open-ended questions, like what are some of the challenges you face? What are some things that you see as opportunities for improvement? I also met with our assistant director of health, our health services department, as well as the lead nurse. And then Dr. Williams defined a specific scope. So what that involved was looking at every single case that was entered in our health services database, which is linked to the dashboard that you see from September the 20th through October the 20th. So what that equated to was 805 cases. And this could be anywhere from a positive case to somebody that came to the nurse with the sniffles, and it was an alternative diagnosis. So any case that was entered in that system. So in order to boil this down and make it a little bit more manageable, Dr. Williams and I decided that 10% would be a good sample to audit. So I audited 81 cases that were entered into the database. I also cross-referenced that information to student attendance data that was in Skyward. And if it was a staff member, I referenced Cronos, when they're clocking in and out, or I looked in eFinance to make sure if they took COVID leave, that that was entered properly. So in order to audit this, it relied on two factors, really. So we're relying on parents and staff to stay home or keep their child home when we, when our nurses send a letter and said, this is your exclusion window. So we're relying on them to abide by those prescribed times. We're also relying heavily on our nurses to make a professional judgment, because with COVID, there's subjective, there's subjective symptoms, such as, I feel tired. Well, tired is hard to define. It's not like a fever that can be actually red. So we're relying heavily on a nurse to make a professional judgment, which they would do anyway outside of COVID, when it's flu season or cold season. So in terms of specific case study observations, overall, the district achieved a 91% accuracy rate in excluding students or staff in terms of the 10-day protocol. There were minimal deviations from district policy. And then categorically speaking, for positive and presumed positive cases, that was totaled 46 cases, 89% of those cases met district exclusion parameters. There were five deviations, and those were when either a student or staff exited a campus earlier than they were intended, than they were prescribed to, or returned to a campus earlier than they were prescribed to. There were eight negative cases in that sample, resulting in 100% efficacy of district protocol. Students and staff left when they were prescribed and then returned. There were 27 exclusion cases that resulted in a 93% accuracy rate with only two deviations from district protocol, as with the positive and negative cases, as with the positive cases, both cases involved a student leaving a campus earlier than prescribed or returning earlier than prescribed. My one recommendation that I thought would mitigate some of these instances where students are returning earlier, or returning earlier or leaving late, with student data services, perhaps there could be some sort of alert in Skyward when they take attendance, that would flag that student's attendance record and go, they are not supposed to be at school today. They need to go to the nurse, and then they need to go home. So that was one of the recommendations, that would be a possibility going forward. Generalized feedback from the nurses, they are feeling more empowered, and they love receiving direct contact. And I think that's as a result of their principal communicating weekly with parents and saying, if you, if your child has these symptoms, please contact your nurse, here's their email, here's their phone. And they feel like they can handle those cases directly versus going through the COVID team, back around to the campus. They prefer the direct contact. And then all nurses reiterated that staff members that are also parents, they bring confusion about how they access those COVID-paid leave days, because if you'll notice in our documents that we distributed to parents, it says that students may return with, I'm sorry, they will be excluded with, they can have a home test that says positive, but if a staff member wants to receive COVID, paid COVID leave, it has to be a lab performed PCR test. And there's just a few words in that document that deviate from the student requirement. So all nurses reiterated that as a district, we need to communicate that, reiterate that in a newsletter or some sort of district communication, that that is required. So when I asked our payroll or HR department how many cases that would, that had been affected by that, it's around 20 employees that did not present a lab-performed positive test and then did not get those paid leave days, paid leave days. So my recommendation to that would be just obviously to communicate that out to employees. So going forward, Ms. Lopez will take this, and it'll be an ongoing audit. The results were very good. We're doing what we say we want to do. And perhaps with some of the recommendations, we can improve those accuracy rates even more going forward.
Thank you, Julie. I'm so thankful for Julie, because when Julie has conducted her audit, just like all the other audits she's done, we get data, and with data, we can be actionable and make improvements. I'm also thankful for Marina Keaton Fielder and her work, working with the nurses to get such high marks for accuracy across our districts. Of course, I know that Marina feels like I do, and even if there's one that's not right, we're going to figure out a way to improve that. So thank you, Marina.
I'll ask a quick question, and that's kind of interrupting the presentation, but for those 20 staff or faculty members who submitted, I guess there were home tests instead of PCR tests through a lab, is it, I mean, that seems like an honest mistake. And so is it possible that after some sort of communication goes out reminding everybody of that, that they could be retroactively credited with those days?
We'll take a look at things, and we definitely are planning, I know Dr. Price might not be here this evening, but I know there have already been discussions in terms of plans for clarification, and we'll take a look at the broader issues, as you articulated it as well. Thanks.
Pass this back over to Dr. Williams real quick.
Thanks. So in terms of this next portion is just a description of how we plan to make some changes to the health mitigation protocol. Basically, the philosophy underlying the protocol itself is not changing. This is not a big shift in practices at all. What it is, is we heard input from community members, including trustees, regarding the value of adding more specific criteria for moving up or down a stage. And so we, what you'll see this evening is exactly that, greater specificity in that area. And it was developed in consultation with health and medical experts, and also input from the school opening committee. And Dr. Baird will give details regarding that.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. So the revision date is 11/8, and that's because every time we look at it, there's a little, some slight grammatical changes, but their school opening committee gave such valuable information to support the clarity that we need in this. As Dr. Williams mentioned, it's not a change of philosophy, but you will notice greater clarity in the transitions between stages. And that's something that we lacked, that we learned from the previous protocol. We never really had to switch last year, and this year, we quickly switched, had to because of cases. And so this gave us an opportunity to look at when we move up, the conditions move up or move down. And the other thing that you'll notice is that there's a focus on trends. When we see, as you saw the first chart that Dr. Williams shared from Harris County, we saw those peaks. And when we can be proactive, when we, when the trend is beginning, when we have all the information and the trend shows that it's going to go in that, in a certain direction, we can be more proactive and prepared for that, whether it's up or down. So stage five, that is a new stage, that is normal, and whether it's anticipatory or reality soon, when the authorities recognize COVID-19 as endemic, we will shift to stage five with no restrictions. And I think it's important to note that we'll follow the district's communicable disease plan if we need to. If we're not in stage five, then we'll be in either stages one through four, depending on conditions. Stage four monitoring is when the vaccines are widely available for school-wide children and adults. Both of our counties and our district's weekly active positive case trends are stable, and our attendance rate is at least 90% of the historical average. We have several bullets in there for conditions, face coverings, recommended indoors for those unvaccinated, et cetera. I want to highlight on the movement, though, I've already mentioned to move up to stage five, that means it's endemic. But to move down to stage three, that means that weekly active positive case numbers within our districts, Gals and our Harris counties reflect an upward trend. And after consultation with local authorities, the trend is projected to continue. If the trend is projected to continue, then we'll move to stage three.
And on stage four, I'd just like to highlight a couple of aspects of this. I mentioned our consultation with health and medical experts, and there was feedback relating to the appropriateness in stage four of recommending face coverings indoors for those unvaccinated. And in contrast to stage three, as you'll see in a moment, where when we're in stage three, we would be highly encouraging face coverings for all. So we did receive references to the CDC, recommendations relating to if you're indoors and you're unvaccinated. And so there was support within the public health community for distinguishing level of recommendation based on, based on case transmission rates. And so, for example, Dr. Kaiser in Galveston County is one of the individuals who commented on that. Another thing, aspect of this we got positive feedback on was not focusing on, not identifying an if-then statement that's based on an exact quantitative amount by X number of cases or percentage increase, because what was observed was, what's important is really the trend, because if you might have an increase, but it's not expected to continue and expected to decrease again the next week, then that's of less concern. So there definitely was support for this notion that we would consult with health officials before making a decision.
Stage three mitigation is when vaccines, as they are now, are available for school-wide children. Attendance rate is at least 90, I'm sorry, just kidding. I had to switch on mine. Sorry. I'm saying stage three, and I'm reading stage four. Really, the criteria is, is that the criteria to move up to stage four or down to stage two haven't been met. And so we're, this is that stuck in the middle. And if we are at stage three, we are in mitigation stages. And so we would highly encourage face coverage for all, evaluate visitor access, increase clean protocols, social distancing strategies when possible, and make remote conferencing available. So if we're in stage three mitigation, what would it take to move back up to stage four? And this is what we lacked in the previous protocol. That means that the active, weekly active positive cases in our counties and the district reflected downward trend for three weeks, followed by an additional week in which the rate is unchanged. So that means it's already gone down, it's just unchanged, where it continues to go nowhere. And after that, the district would move into stage four. If our district's staff and absentee prison rate prevent the ability to reasonably operate, or student attendance rate falls below 85% of the historical average at a particular school or district-wide, then we would move to stage two. And the movement to stage two can be campus-specific or it could be the district as a whole. If that happens, move to stage two would be at modified operations. We would evaluate temporary school to home for a school, or more than one school, depending on site-specific conditions. Visitor access restricted, and extracurricular travel activities may be restricted or canceled. To move back up to stage three, that means that our district active positive cases indicated downward trend for a one-week period. And after consultation with health authorities, if the trend is projected to continue, then we move to stage three. And this is much faster because of the modified operations nature of this. We don't want to go school to home, and hopefully we won't ever see the stage ever again. And it's here because of formality, and in the unlikely case that our governor orders schools to be closed due to COVID-19, then our district would move to stage one. Hopefully, we can leave this behind in 2020.
And I, in my introductory remarks for this section, I have referenced the school opening committee, and I just want to again highlight their work. So we brought a draft to them, and they had helpful feedback. In general, they supported, each of the members of the, said, hey, we support this, but there were specific suggestions that led to some changes, and are reflecting. We documented this.
You want to open up if you have any questions or comments for president and board?
I didn't have any questions, just a comment. First of all, welcome, Ms. Lopez. You have big shoes to fill when they aren't the ones you need. And I just wanted to make some remarks. You know, looking at the 33 active cases, 103 active quarantines, and I think back to the beginning of school, first of all, just wanted to thank you for the update. We're fortunate, as we're hitting the end of the fall semester, and as we go look at volleyball playoffs and, you know, band performances and things of that nature, our community is very, very fortunate, especially since I work for a global company, and I talk with my counterparts across the country, in other states whose kids are not participating in extracurriculars and other things. So we're very fortunate to be able to do that. Looking at the numbers, I think of our custodial staff, I think of our bus drivers, I think of our teachers, I think of our parent professionals, I think of all those people that have to be thanked for going above and beyond, as well as our nursing staff. I saw one of my neighbors this weekend thanked her for her service, because it's a community effort that allows us to be able to do some of the things. And, you know, we get wrapped up in beliefs, whether we believe there's a pandemic going on, whether it's affected us or not, et cetera, et cetera. The district has to accommodate everybody. And that's one thing about public school. We have to take all of that into consideration and do what's best for all. May not be what, you know, what you believe, it may not be what you want to happen, it may not be, but, you know, that's what the district has to do. So I applaud our safely reopened committee, and I applaud our staff for making that happen. And I know when we got started at the beginning of the year, I said this, and I'll continue to say that, until we get to that endemic level, we're still going to have to continually modify, revise, review, look at, you know, our protocol. It is not a one-size-fits-all. And it's almost impossible to get it right the first time, because things change. So I just want to let our community know what goes into doing that. I think I thanked staff before when we went to our virtual online, because a lot of people don't know that you guys gave up your weekend to make that happen. I think it just fell out of the sky and happened, and that stuff does not happen. So thank you for your efforts, and thank you, you know. And as I told a parent the other day, this is one of the reasons why we all do this, is getting to support, you know, our students as they go on to state or as they perform. And, you know, we have Clearbrook going to band, for example, this Thursday. And, you know, we have Clearbrook going to band, for example, this Thursday, so hopefully they can bring home, you know, some state recognition. We had robotics the other day, Best. Westbrook that, you know, competed against high school teams and brought home some state titles. So, you know, that's what we're trying to provide, are the opportunities for our students to be able to do this. And so, thank you. And I'll open it up.
Mr. Larson?
I would just like to know how soon can we implement this revised protocol?
It would be our, it's our tentative plan to announce this tomorrow and announce that as of Wednesday morning that we are in stage four officially.
And when you say announce tomorrow, that means up on the website and everything?
Yes, communicate to parents. The Dr. Bear's one word with communicates to me, if you can repeat again what you've said earlier in terms of, so generally speaking, we are at stage four. We would be at stage four, and that includes no restrictions for school activities, with one exception that, if you can repeat that exception.
Sure. With the exception of breakfast and lunch at the elementary schools, only because they just had access to vaccines for those parents that really want their kids to have one. And it's a five-week process. And so that five-week process would take us about a month, a week and a half just before the holiday break. And so our elementary schools will go into stage four at the beginning of the semester.
Can I just ask, relative to that, how it, the impact on sixth grade? And whether that was part of the discussion?
I can't say, we can't say it was part of the discussion as far as meals or as far as moving to stage four.
But I can say that we, the plan right now is we have separated, you know, given some distance and opportunities for students to have a little more social distancing, and we would continue what we're doing now in the facilities at least through the end of this school year. It is a, it's rather challenging to move in and out of, you know, configuring the system and the areas as they are, so we would maintain that.
The same opportunities for lunch, distancing options still exist at lunch for students at intermediate schools and high schools, really, for that matter. The in-school events that they're having by grade levels, one to two grade levels at a time. So that will still support at least some efforts to take care of our sixth graders.
And just to emphasize, we're all, we would all be at level four, it's just with the exception in terms of activity.
Yeah, so thank you, obviously, for everything you're doing. Policy back in the corner, good job, thank you very much. And with the audit, one thing I was curious about, the school activities, two words, field trips. What's the discussion? What's the plan? Where do we stand with that? Because I've been asked.
I'd be more than happy to share with you about field trips, and then Holly and Karen can chime in.
That's the only thing that'll miss list.
Yeah. So we are open for field trips. The challenge with field trips have been, certain destinations have required either masks or vaccines, more and more copy of the vaccination status.
So the district policy is, we're allowing field trips, provided you meet the requirements of the location.
During stage four specifically.
Starting tomorrow.
Yeah, starting tomorrow.
Hopefully.
Any other comments that you all would add? Or, it's pretty, the guess is short.
Yes.
Okay.
So can I follow up on that? So does that mean that if masks are required, then if students are to fill that, then they'll be able to go? Or does that mix it? As in, like, what does that mean?
Currently, right now, for elementary specifically, we are only looking at locations that are mask-free environments, and we have found some of those. So there are some places that have.
Mask optional.
Mask optional. Mask optional. Sorry, mask optional, thank you, thank you. To divide a student population and to try, we've had strong conversations about that and have been seeking out areas in which those are not mask-required destinations. So we're also looking to see if things will change coming into the spring, and perhaps some of those places that are historic locations that we have attended, hoping that they will change their requirements for mask required.
Is there any discussion with some of those places? Because I know a concern would be potentially getting dropped off of their list, right? If we don't do it this year, and then, I don't know, some other districts get in there, and then we're dropped off of the list, we're potentially in the future.
That is a concern. I certainly know, specifically in our fine arts area of, we do fine arts and symphony, the third and fifth grade all marked trips that we've taken, that is a discussion. And I know that Mr. Goodman has reached out and has as well to those locations. But that is, and different districts are taking different steps forward on that.
So included in the field trips, real quick. My daughter was a senior last year, and their choir was not allowed to take a big trip, right, for clear spring. So is that something that's back on the table? Right? Band, I think, intermediate band, Six Flags trip, things like that that weren't allowed last year, those would be?
The copy of while we're in stage four.
Stage four. And we do, you know, we pretty well restrict it, almost intermediate, we're not travel, but the field trips and all of those, yes. And, you know, our Clear Springs band is on those big charter buses and traveled on Sunday evenings, and we definitely are back into trouble.
Well, I think from my perspective, most of my questions have been answered either by other people's questions or just the presentation. So thank you guys for all of the hard work going into this. I think this is a huge evolution in our philosophy. And I think the transitions, as they're written, with the exception of the transition to stage five, and I'm sure that's one that will get a lot more, get looked at a lot more as we possibly approach that point. But I know in the original draft, there was, there were more of the transition steps that kind of made some of the other local health authorities or the state or federal government kind of gatekeepers in that transition. And so I'm glad that the way these are, these are written, I think they strike a good balance between maintaining local control and us being able to make decisions based on our data and our community's needs, and still taking into account national trends and expert opinion. So I think the way these are written, they thread those needles very well, and I'm happy with what we came up with here. So good job everyone involved.
I'm proud of the interdepartmental, it's throughout the district. I was just presenting, but it's everyone around here that really made it happen. This, the practices that you pointed out, really aligns to our practices that we followed. And there have been times that Harris County did something different from Galveston County, and we got stuck in the middle at the very beginning, so it really does align that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was looking at my notes. Julie's recommendation, the Skyward alert, and students have been flagged, right? Is that, like, is that happening? I mean, it's a recommendation.
Well, it's the process. So this will allow Mr. Harden to take back his technology and investigate what can be done for them. There are many different flags in Skyward, and so it could be in the works, that's possible.
And there are some things that have already been implemented, and so board members have a hard copy of the audit report. And so that also provides greater detail in terms of some of the changes that are being made.
And actually, the flags already exist in Skyward, just not an audible alert or anything like that. We'll share with you future Friday packets.
I did have a couple of things, and actually, one is somewhat related to that. I appreciated in the audit report you referencing a few of those things where there was a change that, like, where a nurse created a report or some situation like that, and there were several of those throughout the report. And I did just want to note thankfulness or responsiveness to that. And, I mean, I can't think of a better way than to do these little mini audits as the school year goes on and be able to respond to it and not just wait for the end of the year and try to be implementing something then that may not even apply. So I greatly appreciate that on everybody's part, and identifying them and where it was happening, and then on the district allowing those things to happen and take hold. And did, I had noted the thing that Mr. Boone brought up with the 20 teachers and going back on that, but also to make sure that everybody is more informed, all of the employees are more informed about what those departments are. And I think that's what you were saying when you initially responded to him, but I just wanted to round that out. And then I had a few, like, specific things in its language, realizing that in many of these cases, you want to be very specific about language. So in stage four, it says maintain cleaning protocols. Does that mean the same cleaning protocols as we, like, are used to using under normal? Or does that mean some kind of increased COVID cleaning protocol?
Not increased, but maintain, it's really what we're doing, maintain current cleaning. Paul, you can chime in also, maybe a little bit more background on the cleaning.
We'll continue, we'll continue basically the cleaning we had in place. We're not bringing in outside companies like we did last year. We've got our own employees, custodians that are doing cleaning. And really, last time I talked to Ed about this, which was a week or two ago, the numbers are down so much that they're hardly getting any calls for extra cleaning. It's really down to near zero. But we've been doing that all internal.
Because stage three says that it's increased cleaning protocols in stage three, so stage four would just maintain those.
Right. And we still have the same cleaning protocol, we're just, we're not having to do it as we did so few.
I think the confusion here is you can go to stage four from either stage five or from stage three, and in stage five, you don't have an increased protocol, and in stage three, you do. So I guess that's where, maybe where the confusion is coming from.
So we do not want to stop the process. We will proceed, but this is an iterative process, and that's an example of something we'll look at, because a lot of our language previously was based on implicit assumption to go in one particular direction. And so we like how we separated this out now, but that's an example, the word increase of, hey, let's take a look at that. But we will proceed, and it'll likely still include that when we publish tomorrow, but we'll look at that and iterate.
And there's a, there's a manual that has the protocols in it, right? That, I remember when that was developed by the original committee for the 2020, 2021 school year. Are we still using that to kind of drive our cleaning protocols?
It's the baseline, but we've modified it so much because of what we've learned over the last year. We probably have not got that manual up to current day, current speed, so maybe we'll do that.
But conceivably, you could update that to what our current practices are now, while we're in stage four, keep using them. If we ever get to stage five, you put that on the shelf. And then if we come out of stage five for some reason, then it can just be pulled back off the shelf and go into effect.
I'll make a note to check on it.
Mr. Larson, did you have a comment?
My question within that also had to do with even, like, within the classroom and providing wipes or cleaning materials or whatever, and I don't, you know, whatever is being done or is not being done, and I assume that would be a part of that language of the protocol, but I think it's important to distinguish what's happening and be specific about language. And actually, Dan, I had a couple other, the, in stage three, where it talks about remote conferencing, is that the remote conferencing specific to students? Like, if they get, okay.
Yes. So we paused that, but if we were to transition to stage three, we would resume that.
Okay. And so I don't know if you want to add some kind of specifics to that, because my concern was a parent reading it, thinking that they're, and I don't know how much is being done with, like, a parent being, having a remote conference about their child, but I want to make sure that that's read in the right way.
We think, I think we can put some specificity in there, like, relating to purpose of remote conferencing for students during the short-term building services.
And then my only other question was the, in the stage two, the, I was curious about the one-week requirement there for moving to stage three, whereas in stage three, there's a trend over three weeks plus another week. And so the, to me, one, to me, one week doesn't tell a whole lot.
You repeat, which part are you referencing?
In stage two, the moving up to stage three, the first sentence talks about, it indicates a downward trend over a one-week period and local.
So really, what's, this is a reference to is if we were going to a temporary school to home, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't have a need to shut for, except for really short term. So this is really talking about in terms of if you were having temporary school to home instruction, you wouldn't stay in that for more than a short period.
Okay.
And the rates you need to. We would have to see a downward trend over a one-week period, and so if that, the COVID rates decline over a one-week period, we'd still go back to stage three with the other protocols in place. But the main part about this is the school to home, so minimizing that as much as possible, unless we need it. Mr. Larson, did you have a comment?
The only other comment I would make was, this is a tremendous improvement, and I'd rather get moving on quicker and tweak it later than wait for anything, and I concur with your strategy.
Thank you.
I was going to ask Mr. Lopardi about, we've been tracking kind of our expenditures as it relates to all of the COVID-related expenses. Is that, is that still something we'll continue to do, not knowing ultimately what?
Yeah, we did a great job of tracking everything last year. And this year, I need to get back and make sure we've done the same thing, because we were, we were unsure of funding, and so we were taking it out of the capital plan, and so this, we've got the SRF funding, we've got all kinds of funding now that we're using for that, but I'll go to check that.
Any other questions or comments? We'll turn to Ms. Hughes for virtual learning.
All right. Thank you again for letting, for letting us share a bit about where we are with virtual learning. Dr. Boone and I have some information to share with you, and just so that we could update on progress and where we currently are. As you know, just two short months ago, it's hard to believe, September 7th, we launched our virtual learning, like Mr. Cunningham referenced earlier. We had 637 students sign up for virtual learning kindergarten through sixth grade. In that time, we scheduled out classes over that weekend, yes, over, for 26 classroom teachers, two substitute teachers, and over 20 additional teachers providing services that range from gifted and talented dyslexia resource, and parent professionals as well to support the learning in a virtual environment. By the day that we launched from signup, we actually dropped 26% of the parents who chose virtual learning, dropped back and changed back to brick and mortar before we even began. So 156 students began back in brick and mortar before we opened our virtual doors. Since that time, we have been monitoring virtual learning in many different ways, and on a daily and weekly basis, we have had fluid movement of students from the virtual learning environment back to brick and mortar classrooms over time. And while doing so and tracking that enrollment, and I'm very thankful for all of the campus leaders, all the departments that have helped keep this going and to keep our students safe. keep, um, our students, um, moving forward. Um, we have moved back students every, almost every day of the week back to brick and mortar learning. In the, on that process, we've asked for teacher feedback on student progress. We have continually surveyed them as regard to their, what they're seeing from their learners in a virtual setting and how students are progressing in that, um, in that environment. We have launched a, an interest survey to parents regarding the spring and to note their intention if, if they expect, anticipate, plan to have their children return back to brick and mortar classrooms, or if they are interested in continuing on in a virtual environment. And then certainly a large portion of our work has been reviewing student data in, um, in this environment and trying to, um, ensure that we are moving all students forward, um, in their progress. And looking at that determine, and, and the academic progress, we've looked in bands of students, certainly, um, K through three. I know we just had a great presentation on our reading academies and our literacy development and, um, in our, our early grades. We're looking at our core content, learning progressions, um, over the nine weeks and, um, our reading levels. And certainly honestly looking at active participation, our students, um, part of our caveat, we know from our experiences in the past that you, we must have active learners to be able to really engage in, um, progressing through this virtual environment with screens, screens on, logging on, completing assignments and engaging in, um, small group and large group instruction. So that's been a piece of monitoring as well as the fourth and fifth, um, our content progressions and our, um, looking at star data as well and other assessment information. In sixth grade, I know Dr. Eagle, um, has certainly been tracking, um, and, um, those that are not successful in one core class or if they are not showing success in two or more classes and as well as that active participation. Just some data points to share with you. Um, and there's, we'll look at this in a different form in just a moment, but just to share, um, we certainly started off with that and as a data point too, we, I, we literally had three students transition back to brick and mortar by the time I started this presentation this morning to, to date, to now. So, um, it is constantly moving. So, um, I appreciate you for understanding with that. But we initially started with those 690 students that were interested. We are currently sitting, I would, I guess now I should say 300, yeah, a little less than 390 to, right now. Um, and, um, by choice, we have 192 students stating that, uh, parents stating that they will want to bring their students back to our brick and mortar classrooms. And then certainly moving on, looking, we have 82 students that we continue to want to bring back to, um, brick and mortar for academic progress. And, um, that brings us to 274 students returning to campus and with 103 students remaining in the virtual learning program. To see that in a different, um, representation in a graph form on, um, slide five, uh, slide six, that is, you can see the orange trend data of, um, where we initially started with our virtual learners. Certainly the yellow line represents our, um, our enrollment at this time. And then once you look at that corally red color there at the bottom, um, you see our students that would be remaining in virtual learning based on the indication that we have received from parents stating that they would like to continue that consideration of virtual learning and those that are meeting criteria of showing that they are successful and, uh, continue to progress. We want to make the board aware of the potential in our community, that our potential impact. We've learned, um, many lessons and, um, through our activities and, um, uh, building and online and changing from, um, the different environments. And want to be aware that there are, and there's an impact on both sides of both brick and mortar and virtual and it impacts, um, district-wide. Um, and many, many are impacted by this. And so I want to make sure you're aware of that, um, this afternoon. Um, and brick and mortar, our class sizes may increase. It all, it all depends on, um, on many staffing points. Class assignments may change for students that are in brick and mortar currently. They may have a change of, um, assignment teacher. Staff assignments may need to shift to meet needs. Our virtual learning students is a positive as they return to a brick and mortar campus, um, activities. They will receive it, um, that true targeted intervention that we are building, um, and just an example, the video earlier of that in-person learning. Um, and then also clear view, uh, the enrollment will have a potential increase with the return of staffing, um, right now, um, that we're looking towards at the semester mark. And then in virtually, it says classes may increase or decrease. We had a discussion about that this morning. We have, um, I have a couple of classes, we have a couple of classes of, um, I'd say second grade that may have 16 students in it right now virtually. That when we collapse classes, that class size may rise to, um, 20 or more students in that class, um, served by a, a, a different teacher. Class assignments may change for, um, teachers. Uh, we are looking at to see, um, which teachers are interested in continuing if we continue on with, um, virtual learning. And, um, class assignments may change for students, um, as far as the teacher assigned to teach that class. Now our potential next steps, just to share, um, is that students who are academically successful may continue in the virtual program. Um, and, um, all other students will be assigned back to their home campus. Um, and our next steps certainly are to determine staffing allocations for, um, virtual as well as, um, brick and mortar, um, staffing plans. And then additionally, it will take, um, a heavy lift to start our, uh, communication plans for both students and staff. We will have many, many impacted and, um, want to make sure that we, um, step forward with that. As far as questions or feedback, um, definitely want to just give a, an overview here and then respond to questions or comments that Dr. Williams, you may have.
Um, the only other thing I would add is, uh, that, um, so if not action required by the board, our plan would be to proceed with, um, what, what's been described this evening would be of course communicating specifically with parents and staff on that step.
I do have, uh, two, two things, I guess. One is, um, my understanding is that once they leave the, the virtual learning, they do not have the option to go back into it. And is that true? And is that being communicated to everybody as they leave and?
Yes ma'am, that is absolutely accurate. Um, this is, this is already, we've made one choice in learning already to move to the virtual environment. Once moving back to brick and mortar, that is, um, the final step, um, as far as, um, the assignments for the rest of the year.
And that'll be really important that we emphasize that in communication heading into the second semester, um, even with states, with perhaps including statements such as even if there's a significant upward trend, um, if, if you want to prepare for that, you need to stay.
My other question, and it's, it's simply, I don't understand. It, you talked about the clear view enrollment with the return of staffing and is that because some of that staffing was covering a sixth grade class or?
Yes, and I can address that. What we did, um, we didn't have enough students in sixth grade to pull a unit from any intermediate. There wasn't enough. Our clear view enrollment was down. And so what we did is went to clear view and pull some of that staff to support, um, our virtual sixth grade. Um, Ms. Speaks is actually, um, we call her our sixth grade virtual principal. And she is very engaged in all activities with that, um, program over there because we have some staff. Um, historically, clear view is a lower enrollment in this, in the fall semester and as grades come out, it historically grows. And so we are at that point now that we do have some, a few on a waiting list, so, um, we, we can collapse some and bring some of that staff back into clear view. We have, um, three teachers right now and then a couple of substitutes that we are using. So that's how we were able to, to staff this, using our, our resources wisely at the time.
Okay, thank you. And then my, my one remaining question, and it's a very open-ended one, but I'm just wondering if there's been any thought or any discussion about whether there are things that we have learned and the way that the law exists right now as it was changed, would it allow for us to do something going into the future? Is that something we're going to continue looking at, thinking about and?
Sure. Uh, the laws that exist now, and that was, came out of the second special, special session, uh, would allow us to have virtual school until September 1st of 2023. We've talked to cabinet about building out a successful virtual learning program for long-term. Cause there are students, as you said, as Ms. Hughes shared, there are students who are successful. And we've heard the anecdotal stories from parents along the way also. Um, so we started this work back in April or May to, to build out a, a better virtual learning program and this last minute shift, um, made it tough and, and, and I applaud Susan, Dr. Eagle for using our units wisely and, um, to get staffing for those students. But I think there's an opportunity there to continue to explore how best to build out a possible virtual learning program for students and make it successful, even if it's a small number of students.
I, I would appreciate it just from the extent that, um, you know, I even go back to discussions that we had about the school start times and the possibilities of alternative ways of learning. And, and even to the extent that, I mean, I think we've learned a lot through this entire time. Um, and so even to the extent, and I know that there's other rules within, everything within DEA which may not allow it, but even to the extent to allow, um, maybe more virtual classes that could be offered, even a student taking it at the high school during the day or something like that. Just, there's lots of possibilities and lots of ways to continue on with that personalizing education for students. And, and so to the extent we could use what we've learned and be able to build something, I think it's worth exploring.
It fits hand-in-hand with personalized learning. There are some students that will soar perhaps with a E A, ELA class and there are other students who would, would just fly through a math class. Um, and you can guess which one I would pick.
Thank you.
Just, just have a question about, um, so there's really, I guess part of our communications is there's not an option for students who are currently brick and mortar to opt to virtual in the spring?
That's accurate. That is accurate, yes sir.
So I think maybe just mentioning that too, just knowing that parents have on rates and off rates of each.
Yeah, and one way to address that is, um, we're continuing the program for those who are enrolled and, and success, enroll successful and want to continue in the second, in the second semester. And we, um, and one variable in driving that decision is the fact that while significant number of students were successful, there were significant numbers of students that were not successful, even though, um, they hoped, hoped to make it work.
Do we know, um, maybe, maybe this is down the road, but better understanding, you have some of the students that may have run into difficulties. Do we have more background on them where we might've anticipated that could be a challenge for them?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. I would say that we launched into this accepting all students and really canceled, as you can tell by the numbers, over time, the schools have worked diligently, teachers, principals to communicate the need to come back to brick and mortar for, um, an increased support for instruction. So that's how we definitely had a, a significant portion change back to brick and mortar. But yes, we are very aware, very aware of the students, some of the students that started off with some concerns are, are, it's time to transition back to brick and mortar.
And some of the interesting data point is that we started at the sixth grade with two on level, kind of strands and one honors. And now we're down to honors on level, about the same number of, um, students that are going to remain. So, you know, we're seeing that some students are just able to donate those supports and are able to, some students are taking, um, highly successful with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I'll comment real quick when you say about the highly successful. I know that, um, well, I think it's Comro ISD, some of the new elementary schools, they have some great virtual learning classrooms that they've built into the campuses and everything. And thinking about what Dr. Dupont said about looking forward, um, you know, for those students who can excel at that option and keeping that option on the table and looking at some of those other school districts that are building for it. And I'm looking back there because I think he's smiling a bit because he's probably instrumental in doing that in Comro. But, but it does.
What's that? Oh. Oh, we'll ask again. We, we, we were talking with Comro a lot as well, but we, we work with that, we built some virtual labs.
Yeah. So, and from what I saw, it looked amazing and definitely innovative. Um, so, you know, if it is something that obviously financially, you know, something the district can take on, um, keeping that option on the table for the future. And, and, you know, and then on, I guess with that, looking at the numbers, and I think the, the comments, you probably already answered this, but looking at from initial to current to remaining, um, and not necessarily getting in the weeds, but understanding why. And obviously there's the obvious academic reasons why, but then the parents, it's not like we're giving them an exit interview on this, are we?
We actually are keeping a bit of information and a lot of conversations about the transition point.
Any offering on, because I'm kind of picturing the range, obviously academic versus or COVID, right? Concerns, things like that. And so as we have the conversations to with all the mitigation and protocols and everything, is that one of the whys?
Absolutely.
Whatever that comfort level, um, you know, of them saying, okay, we see the numbers go down, we feel more comfortable. So.
Our data dashboard has, um, played a, a large part, part in the decision-making of our families.
So y'all are asking that why? Good. All right. Thank you.
One thing I, just to add, to talk about the virtual learning, and this is the first year that, um, in our educational planning guide, this was, is there, we have flexible scheduling and that's actually, you know, we've had that, but now it's, it's will be documented in the EDG. So we're moving definitely in that direction. Um, we're excited about that.
And, and thank y'all for managing the logistics of this because just hearing you and you're talking about these teachers and clear view and, you know, you've got so many moving parts. Thank you for all y'all do because the logistics is not easy and, and I can't imagine. So thank you.
Any other questions? We will move on to Paul.
Yes, and I see, yes, thank you. This is again, not an action item, just a discussion, uh, for something that's going to be on the agenda, um, at November meeting next week. I can see the time, it's 6:18 and we're getting late. So I have some preamble to do, but what I would, uh, you've all read the, pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. You've all read the, the Friday memo. So really was just kind of reiterating that. The only thing I would, uh, add is on the, uh, analysis I did, the cost benefit analysis, that in-house savings, uh, $42,000 is based on like an accounting way to look at things. We amortized that $250,000 cost of the equipment over 10 years. If you look at it just on a cash basis, year to year, it's really, uh, the difference is more like $67,000. You add that $25,000, uh, back into it. And, uh, that's how much we would be saving by doing it internally. This is a one-time cash outlay. So I went ahead and put it in the analysis as a recurring monthly, like annually $25,000 amount. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. I know that, uh, the time's late, so I don't want to spend a lot of it just talking.
I just wanted to mention one thing. You, you amortize that out of 10 years and it's probably reasonable considering how long that equipment lasts. I've certainly used the old equipment. I've used versions of it that were 20 years old. Uh, but we did have to, we are having to move after eight years. And so I think it might be a case of, we might be forced to move through obsolescence or changes in the law before the equipment actually wears out. But what I noticed is when I did that, when I took your numbers and looked at what we're willing to mean over eight years, say for example, it's the tent, it's still a savings. So.
Yes, yes. Yeah, even over, if you did it over seven years, like our current equipment, it's still $32,000 a year savings based off of that.
So where does, uh, uh, obviously the bulk of the cost for the counties running the election is Harris County.
Yes.
Where, have you been given a breakdown of, of how, how much they're charging each county and is it the same in every election? Cause I, I know, I know we look, we had to pay for participation in the November 2020 election, which for a lot of reasons was extremely expensive for the county. But is that, uh, is that costs hold up in the May elections as well?
This is based up, and we got this information directly from Harris County. They actually lowered, uh, the cost to do this, the November elec- The November election was much higher, it was $250,000 or something like that. So this is based on a dollar five for every registered voter. Doesn't matter if they vote or not. So it's a dollar five for every registered voter plus a flat fee of $2,500. And it's, I've got that information in the, in the spreadsheet, actually. We actually talked to the Secretary of State about that as well because, just to let them know what they were charging. And so they're looking into it as well to see if that's appropriate charge. But it's much lower than what we were charging in November 2020.
Right. But I remember being shown figures when we looked at this a couple of years ago that were more like $50,000 for a May election. I mean, is there any explanation for why? Because we have about the same number of registered voters in each side of the district, if not more in Galveston County. Is there, is there any explanation for why it's so much more expensive in Harris County than it is in Galveston?
Because they're, the way they're charging is for every registered voter. And Galveston County's not charging like that. They've got a different fee structure. And I can't, I don't know, I can't tell you what it is off the top of my head.
So they've got a different fee structure, but Galveston County, I mean, it all goes into the same pot. So Galveston County is going to be running a smaller election in fewer locations and fewer registered voters, but we would also be a larger share of that pie. So I don't know. I would like a lot more clarity about what is driving the difference in those two costs.
Okay. You go ahead.
And then I guess my other question is, is it possible to sell this equipment back or sell it once we bought it?
The new equipment we're looking at?
Yes.
I don't know. I mean, that's, I don't know, we'd have to sell it to another entity, right? So, yeah, we've never tried that before. We've put maybe a possibility, but I couldn't tell you for sure.
I can tell you there's a market for it because I do recall years ago when there was a big fire in Harris County and they lost a lot of their equipment, they had to replace it in a hurry. So there's, there's going to be entities around the country that, the only question is, can you really make up enough of your original investment back on it to make it worthwhile? I guess, I guess you'll, you'll come back to us with some more numbers.
I'll certainly try to find out the major difference between Galveston and Harris County. Galveston's a little looser organization and they, Harris County is very businesslike and they've got set schedule fees and, but I'll get that information.
Because I've just got to go back to the fact that tons and tons of districts in Harris County, most of the large ones, have Harris County conduct their elections. HISC does, Cypher ISC does, Klein, Upland, all of the big ones. And we are definitely the odd ones out on that. And maybe that's driven by the separation between the two counties, but I've got to think those other districts have looked at the cost benefit of this and either come up with a different answer or I guess maybe they just don't care. But, but when you look at it from the taxpayer perspective too, just because, I mean, I know we have to look out for our own budget, but from a taxpayer's perspective, if, I mean, I am a taxpayer in Harris County. And so if we go about this, I am indirectly paying for two elections to take place at the same time. So the cost of the countywide election, countywide, doesn't go down just because we're not a part of it. They still have to have the exact same number of polling locations, the exact same number of workers and something like the same number of people will still be voting. But the additional cost of us running an election is just added on to the overall amount that an individual taxpayer is hanging into. So it's, so even though it looks like we're saving money here, really we're just pulling out of one pocket, like we're pulling out of one pocket and putting it into another. And so, I mean, I think every time this comes up, I make my opinions on it.
Sure.
I'm definitely against having the two elections. I don't want us to lock ourselves in with a big new purchase that we can't get out of to run our own elections for the next decade. And especially if the math on these numbers, on these costs could change. So I'd like a lot more information, but that's kind of where I am right now.
So for voting reasons, for our voting reasons, at the board meeting, is the vote that will consider purchasing this equipment, is the conversation going to be about running our own elections? Is this something that needs to be considered? You know, I don't want to prevent the decision based on running our own elections.
So we've always, we've always run our own election, longer than I've been here. We bought our own election equipment in 2014. So that's the difference. So if, if you don't approve the agenda item for the election equipment, then we're not running our own elections because it's time to phase that other out. The legislature's got the new equipment that's required now with paper backup. So essentially, a vote of no on the election equipment tells me that we're not running the elections internally. You don't have to have a formal vote on that. I mean, that's, that just works as well.
Well, it answers your question.
And then we would start working with the other entities to come up with the election agreements, if that would be it. And so, and then the November election was a little different because that was presidential, that had huge things going on. Just the May election is why they lowered the cost of Harris County. They may, could lower it lower, but we've tried to talk to them and don't know if it through.
So the other question I have is there's some, in order to go from running our own elections to having the county run them, there are some moving pieces that have to happen legally to do that, right? And then do we know that the counties are even having their own elections next year and then?
They will, they will if we request them.
Okay.
So, so they may not have, they may only have a few entities. I mean, certainly it's, there's some cities that are on May elections. Most other entities are on the November election. There's some larger districts and things like that. So it'd be very small numbers of.
So I thought there was a provision that if, if there is a primary and this election is going to be sandwiched right between the primary and the runoff for state federal offices, regardless of if we run or the county does. But so there's been discussion in the past that in even number of years, the counties might refuse to run local elections because they're also running primaries and runoffs. So is that not a factor anymore?
That was the impetus back in 2014 when we changed. I think they've made some adjustments at the county to where they can, they can handle that, but I'll verify that before, before we come back on Monday.
Can I have one more follow-up too? Just to conclude. I know we're at 6:30 now. Does it make sense then, if a vote of no to purchase this equipment means then we in essence are going to let the counties run our elections, would it make sense for us to be able to have the black and white pros and cons? Not the personal ones, but the real ones. Pros and cons of what it means to let the county run our elections versus us run our elections. I've only gone through one election my whole life as a participant, but I do believe there's differences. And I think when making that decision, monetarily wise, it saves a taxpayer's money for us to do it in-house, looking at these numbers. But it sounds like there's more to be considered when you look at the big scheme of things, that maybe that's not the right word. The big picture is what's the black and white of us running our elections versus what taxpayer's savings is black and white dollars, but there's obviously some other differences. And that's all my questions. Thank you.
So I would ask, is there a way that we can have a workshop with presentations from each of the county elections representatives sitting in front of us, telling us what they can do, what they can't do? I think that would be very helpful to hear directly from them, what they can do and what they can't do. Another, another point here is, so these are current, equipment is only seven years old. Only seven years old. It is approaching the end of its natural life, but it's only seven years old. We could use this equipment in May of '22. It's not, it's not a make or break thing. We've got to decide now to buy new equipment. We could get, this equipment could get us through May '22 and then these bigger decisions could be made over a time period with input of information from the counties.
I mean, I asked the same question. This equipment is being phased out. So they don't have, if we have a machine go down, they don't have the parts necessarily to keep them up and running. So I could do a, we could do a double check on that, but part of the reason for this is that we want to be, we don't want to be in a position where if one of our machines goes down in the election, that we can't get it back up and running again.
Right, absolutely. Another question I had was if Harris County is the really expensive one, can, can we run our election in Harris County but let Galveston County run it in Galveston? Because voting is done countywide. If you're in Harris County, you go any place in Harris County, you vote. Same thing with Galveston. You go anywhere in Galveston County, you vote. Would that, that would certainly alleviate our problems with not having extra slates or equipment to use if one should fail.
Yes.
I know the city of Pearland does that. So Pearland has some precincts that are in Harris County. The vast majority of Pearland is in Brazoria County, but they do have a few that are in Harris County. And so if you were a Harris County resident who lives in Pearland, you actually go into into Brazoria County, to a Brazoria County location to the.
But they don't actually, and I'm asking because I don't know, they don't actually contract with Harris County for that. They just, they come into the, they could come into the district's boundaries within Brazoria County to vote, correct?
Correct. Yeah, yeah, they have to drive into Brazoria County to do it.
Gotcha. And I don't think I would want to split that up between doing it, you know, part of it ours, so as part of it with the county. To me, it's, that leaves more open questions than, than just having one or the other do the whole thing.
I'm just looking for cost effect.
No, I understand. I agree.
So then, and the, another thing I'll bring up is, you know, we've talked about our deficit budget coming up. Was, was this purchase somehow included in the budget that we're working off of or is this something?
It's not a general fund expenditure. It would be a capital plan expenditure. And so it was, it's not in the current capital plan budget.
Okay. But that's where the money would come from?
That's where it would come from, yes.
When you say capital plan, you mean the capital?
Contingency, yeah. Right, no, I'm falling back on my old, it used to be capital plan, now it's capital contingent, yes.
Seeing no further business, I will adjourn us at 6:35.